Good evening and welcome to the City of Isani Committee of a Whole Meeting for Tuesday, February fifteenth. I'd like to call this meeting to order if we can all rise for pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're adding that now, Ms. Wood?
Are you comfortable? Because you're last.
Yes, thank you Mayor Council. If we could add to the committee of the whole agenda tonight, another, a new first item, which would be an agenda request from the Isani County Sheriff/Fire District, please.
You should have went last. Can you step up to the podium, Chief Jankovic?
Any public comment?
Thank you, gentlemen. So I am here representing both the Fire District tonight and the Sheriff's Office. The Sheriff was not able to make it. In brief, what I'm here for is basically to ask you to consider editing your lease agreement for antennas on top of your water tower for a new public safety repeater for our VHF pagers. So a quick background, I won't take up too much of your time unless you would like.
You're fine. We got two hours, Chief.
Okay. Our pagers, the signal that sends them information has become more and more interrupted over the last twenty years. We've had issues with the signal quality in our VHF pagers for the last twenty years. It's becoming worse and worse to the point where even close to the city, on your edge and slightly beyond it, firefighters aren't receiving pages more than just the tones. And after that, the message that dispatch sends is so poor that the pagers are silencing. So we're not getting our fire pages. Definitely not reliably. Sometimes it's with heavy static. Sometimes at the day, it's clear. It's not consistent, which is pretty common for VHF. The reason that I'm told we're having this issue is these pagers run at a fairly low megahertz signal. It's around two hundred and ninety-four, ninety-five megahertz. That's a fairly common frequency for a lot of other Wi-Fi radios, garage door openers, portable phones, et cetera. The, I think the airwaves in today's world are just busier and especially in that lower bandwidth where these pagers run. So we aren't able to receive as clear of a signal as we were twenty-five, thirty years ago. The only option we really have now, after several months and years of trying different theories, is to power up. Our signal comes from the City of Cambridge down here for the firefighters' pagers. As you know, we have three stations, so they're all fed from the City of Cambridge. The only way that we're seeing that we're able to strengthen our signal is to repeat the signal from up in Cambridge down here in Isani. After looking at options for where we could put a repeating antenna, we've decided that the City of Isani's water tower would be optimal for that. So speaking with the sheriff, he agrees that the water tower would be a good location to place that antenna. It's basically a WIP antenna, a little bit bigger than what you would see on a semi-truck's mirror for their CB. The radio is about the size of this computer, a little bit smaller. The electrical load that needs to run it is minimal. The sheriff is open to budgeting for the electricity, above and beyond that, in my opinion, which is what he does in other locations in the county where he has these repeater antennas. But in the minds of public safety, similar to other towns in Isani, we would ask that you would consider waiving the fee that you would normally charge a vendor to pay an antenna on your water tower.
So the questions I have, are you thinking about going this way as well eventually? Or are you just going to see how this one does?
We'll see how this one does.
And then, secondly, I was going to ask, this is essentially no cost to the City of Isani, I'm assuming?
That's correct. The only cost, well, the install, all that would be covered by funds that the sheriff would come up with, so to speak. If he can't find grant dollars or other funds like that, he would be willing to budget it in next year. The only funds that it would cost the city would be the space in the bottom of the water tower where we would need to store our little radio and the power to run it, which the sheriff is willing to budget in reimbursement for.
How big is that power unit, do you think, Chief?
It's about this big.
So essentially, we're looking at two items that are...
A WIP antenna and the box, that's about this big. It's not very big.
I'm going to be facetious?
Yeah.
Is Oxford going to, is Oxford, are they going to benefit from this?
Yes, they will.
Maybe get somebody over there to maybe play ball. I'm not, yeah, I'm being facetious, you know that.
I know.
This has everything in my mind to do with great public safety, and there's no way that I'm going to say no to this. So that's my opinion, though.
Where does the battery go?
The battery is, he's saying it's pretty small.
Direct wired.
And then it's wired, yeah, it's direct wired from the WIP to the...
No, the computer, the little computer box.
What I'm saying, it's not a rack of equipment. It's nothing very technical. It's basically a box.
No cost? No cost to the city, public safety, small items.
I'd like to just share with the council of how it works when we have a request come for the intent, or for the water tower, just so everyone's aware. I'm not sure if you all are. So they do fill out an application. There is a fee that's associated with that application for staff time because our city engineer does need to review everything. And these are things I've shared already with Chief Jankovic, as well as Sheriff Kolk. And once we get that application in, we look at the preliminary stuff, which I will say that I've mainly done already for Al to ensure that it's something that could possibly go on the water tower, then there needs to be a study done to make sure that the frequency that's getting put on the water tower doesn't impede any flow of other frequencies that are currently on. Our water tower, we do have two other providers on there. One of them is Genesis, which their lease agreement is five hundred dollars per month. Or in lieu, they provide internet service to all city facilities. And then we also do have Sprint on there, which has, as of last year, I believe, was bought out by T-Mobile, but they pay one thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollars per month to the city for rent on the water tower. So we would want to ensure that the frequency that this unit would have wouldn't impede any, or cause any problems with that. I also did share with Sheriff Kolk that they should probably check the Paul Zine's Tower, just to ensure that Paul Zine's Tower provider doesn't have any problems.
That one got sold.
There's no longer a tower there?
There's no longer Paul Zine owning it.
Well, whoever is on that, we wouldn't want to, we would just want to let them know that we're putting something on our water tower. Again, that is not for the city to deal with, but just to also let them know that there is another tower. Because if you didn't look into who is on their tower and you put up this antenna, there could be some interference. So just for them to be aware of. And then after all that study was reviewed by our city engineer, then we'd be able to give the green light that it could be placed on our water tower. And then the next step would be to do a site use agreement, which is what they're requesting to have the lease or monthly rent waived. So just so everyone's aware of the process.
Just, just for FYI, these companies she's talking about are companies for profit.
Yep.
So just so you know, I wanted to clarify that. This is a total different thing. As long as there is, in my opinion, as long as there isn't any interference with the other, which we have up there, which it's already there.
Yep.
And I, I see no problem waiving all charges and fees.
I agree.
That's my opinion. Just, and just so it's clarified, those other are for profit, so they can afford to pay for this. You know, they can. As this is a, this is a life-threatening issue, safety, public safety issue.
It's only going to get worse.
I agree.
If there, if there is interference, is there a way to fix that, or how does that work?
This is the fix.
No, the interference with...
Saying with the other customers we have on the tower.
We rely on the electrical engineers to make that determination. If there is interference, if there is, what could remedy that situation?
What's the likelihood of that? I mean, I'm just, do you know?
I would think they would interfere more than he would interfere, because they're putting out more power than him, wouldn't you think?
However, we do have an agreement with them, so if we impede their, their frequency, we would have an issue because we do have a...
But, but then you also, just keep in mind, everybody, if there was a frequency issue, they would still be having that issue right now. Because this is at one frequency, there's another frequency, and the other's at another frequency. They aren't on the same frequency level as Sprint, T-Mobile, or Genesis. Because if they, if any one of those frequencies are even reasonably close, it would interfere.
It would interfere now without that.
And it would interfere now with it also. So they'd be getting messages on their pagers, because their frequencies are so close.
I'm pretty confident, even if they do do their due diligence in doing this process, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's going to come back green lighted.
The sheriff is open to the engineering study to determine if there's possible interference. This is just step one. If you guys said, "No way, we're not going to allow you on the water tower", then we're not going to pay for engineering. So if you would allow us to be on the water tower and consider waiving the fees, yeah, he has no problem looking forward with the engineering.
Yeah, if they want to pay for the engineering fees, which does cost us hard money, that's, if they want to pay that, that's awesome. I, I would only expect that, because it's costing us money.
It was my recommendation to the sheriff while Al was also on that email, to come here first, just to ensure before they did any work, spent any money, to see what the council...
So do we need this to go to City Council? Is that what we're looking for?
So this won't go to City Council yet. We will make the determination based off the engineer's report that if it's good to go and there is no frequency issues, then we would draft up a use agreement still. It's just the, potentially would be a fee waived, but that agreement would be approved by council once it gets to that point.
Is there anything other than go forward?
No, I'm okay.
Than consent, than other than go forward?
Yep, I'd say we can go forward.
Say we do it.
Good. Thank you for your time.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Chief. Hey Al, where's next, where's tomorrow's meeting? Two?
Station two.
Okay, thanks.
E1 is the City Council Agenda Request from Ms. Sandra Duke, Friends of the Isani Area Library.
Hello.
We would just push that button on there so it turns green. Perfect.
Okay. Yeah, I'm representing the Friends of the Isani Library. And currently, we have a monthly meeting. It's just been changed to the Thursday of the month, just an hour, hour and a half. We're currently meeting in a private home, and that's caused us a little bit of a conflict in trying to get our meetings advertised on the library's calendar, community calendar. So we're looking to move to a more public place, and this location is the logical place to have it. And the only room that we see that's available is the library itself. So we're just asking to meet once a month, Thursday of the month, and then just, we'll need some extra chairs, because if you've been in there, there's only three chairs. So we're saying we just like five more chairs for that period of time.
What time of day is that meeting?
I'm sorry?
What time of day is that meeting?
It starts at nine o'clock. So maybe from nine to...
Noon.
Eleven.
One to two hours monthly, plus the use of five chairs, and seating for eight attendees. Is, it's not going to impede our...
So due to that meeting spa, or that space within City Hall, have any, an agreement with the East Central Regional Library?
That's what I was looking for.
They get, that is their space. We have their lease agreement with, or use agreement with them. Sandra did reach out, because I said that that first step was to make sure that East Central Regional Library is okay with the Friends of Library utilizing that space. And she was. She sent me an email, and she does, she is okay with it. So no, it would not. That was her only thing that would not impede with the days that they have the library link open, and it did not. It was not on the same day.
I'm okay with it. As long as you get that fixed in the box upfront here on your agenda.
Yeah, we're working on that.
I, I have no problem with it.
Yep.
Sounds good to me.
So the only question I have, then, will the chairs be there? Do we have to kind of get the chairs from someplace?
So this, this room is always locked, so you'd have to work with one of the gals up front, or one of the staff members up front, and let them know that you're here and you'd like to get some chairs.
So they'll come from this room?
They would come from this room. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So just so everyone's aware, where we go from here is because it is an outside organization utilizing a city public space at a regular basis, there would be a use agreement that I will bring forward on the next council, outlining responsibilities and things like that. I believe the library link has a key. Does council want staff to let them into that room, though, just for that meeting?
I think they open the door first.
No, no, I mean, you're thinking about that.
The library link?
The library link door. The library has a key for their room.
Do they, I'm not sure if they do or not.
Yeah, I, I think they opened it for Tim, but I could be wrong.
Okay. My recommendation is that we do, we do open it for the organization, so that would be in their agreement, as well as the cleaning, ability to use the chairs. All that should be outlined, and that'll come on the next council meeting, then.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Thanks for coming, ma'am.
And just to be clear, no fee by the, desired by the council, correct? Thank you.
Going to E3, the police updates. Chief Myers.
Mayor Council, just the updates. We are down one patrol officer, patrol officer left, so we're in the process of filling that. So we'll see how that works out here in the next month or so.
Thank you.
Jayden's passing out the crime report. I put that out every year, just the numbers of certain crimes over the last four years. It's a snapshot. It's one piece of data, but it doesn't tell everything. We are, we just completed a post audit, which is done every three or four years, making sure that we're within compliance with the post legislative mandates. So that just got done, I think, last month. We just started the process of going through and getting the NARCAN, I think we talked about the last council meeting, so that's going through right now. The other update I'd like to give is the investigator position. We've changed that to a assignment, a three-year rotation. Officer Lund was assigned to that. And one of the things that we're going to task him to is going to be some outreach pieces. So we're going to have some outreach programs, which are going to be proactive to some of the crimes that we actually see, like domestic assault and stuff like that. So there's a program with them and our prosecuting attorney and our victim services, like trying to be proactive on some of the repetitive victims of that. We're continuing with our officer wellness. We started that last year, making all our officers, mandating them to meet with a mental health provider. So they all did that last year, and still continue that this year. And we're going to expand into some physical wellness for those officers as well on that wellness program. So we did the mental health. We're going to keep mental health and try to add some physical health as well to that. And as I mentioned before, now we're up to running for our in-house basics, our post-mandated trainings. We're going to be doing those all with our own officers that are certified in firearms, defensive tactics, and tasers. So those will all be done in-house, rather than trying to combine with other agencies. It makes it quicker, so we can do it with, when the officers are actually working, rather than pulling them all in at one time. The only last thing I'd like to bring up quick is, you know, you've seen the rebranding. You know, we did the mission statement a couple years ago. A year ago, we did the rebranding of the police car, you know, black police car, the new graphic. And right now, the officers are working on a rebranding of the, our shoulder patch. I think this one's pushing twenty years. So they're looking at that. So it's something you'll see possibly in the future. So tasked a committee, they're looking at that, and we'll have something come out here sometime this year. I'm not sure the timeframe on that rebranding of the shoulder patch for our police departments. That's all I got.
I kind of like their glorious sunny patch, you know? Now they're going to change it.
It's still going to be glorious, just not sunny.
What is, what is CSC?
Criminal Sex Contact.
Okay. Does that mean, for the most part, I mean, like theft is down from last year?
So like the biggest, like a DUI, that's going to be a proactive thing, you know, how our officers are out there reaching and grabbing those.
Yeah.
Rest or actual...
Theft is up.
Call for service.
No.
Oh, down from last year.
Down from last year.
Yeah, you're right.
But I mean, for the most part, it's all working pretty good.
Everybody's legalizing their weapons, so, you know, that's down. What scares me is obstructing legal processes up.
A lot of quarantine people.
Yeah.
They're much just... So yeah, if you look at the trend, I didn't extrapolate that numbers with population, you know, crimes per thousand or whatnot, but we understand we've had a population increase from eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. And in fact, there was actually more crime there in eighteen than there was in any other year.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions by the council?
Is there any, is there any, I don't know, public places that are ever an issue, far as...
No, I'd say we have in the past had more significant issues, because we looked at that with the licensing, the cycle and stuff. We did some numbers. I haven't pulled the numbers, but just generically, anecdotally, I think it's, it's better than it has been for crime. So there's nothing that stands out. Like, there has been in the past. We don't have that right now.
Good. That's good to hear. Any other questions?
Okay.
Thanks, Chief. We'll move on to E4, liquor updates.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I've got some updates for the liquor store. Trying not to put you to sleep with too many numbers, but I had a few of them. December sales were record, in gross sales, we did almost five hundred and nineteen thousand. That's about a hundred thousand up from the previous year, which would be about a twenty-three percent increase. So we're pretty, pretty happy about that. January just finished up. We totaled three hundred and fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars in sales, which is up thirteen percent over last year. As you know, in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, both, both years, we saw significant increases. So it's nice to have a positive trend. Talking to, you know, other liquor store managers and people in the industry, a lot of people are kind of flatlining right now with their sales. So it's nice to still be going up. Having a new store helps a lot, too. But sales by category, kind of broke it down from the grand opening through the end of January. Beer is still our strongest with forty-two percent. Liquor's increased a bit. Thirty-eight percent of our sales are liquor. Wine has increased to fifteen percent, which we were really excited to see, because wine has the best margin out of all that stuff. So we're making more money on those. We're at about nine to ten percent wine sales at the old store. So it's nice to see that number growing, and we're going to do what we can to continue to see that grow. This is not on the report, but as of right before I left here, for the month of February, we're at a hundred, almost a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars for the month. And we did two hundred and fifty-six last, last year in February. So we got half a month to go, and we're almost to where we finished last year. So it's exciting. A few other nice numbers. Our average sale per guest right now is twenty-eight dollars and sixteen cents. One thing I do like about the new point of sale is you can pull a lot of detailed information and really break things down to see what's going on, number by number, transaction by transaction. So our transaction count from the grand opening through the end of January is thirty-three thousand twenty-six. Our largest single sale was twelve hundred and eight dollars and sixty cents. That was two bottles of bourbon, Pappy Van Winkle. Bourbon, one was a ten-year, one was a twelve-year. We've made over nine hundred dollars in profit on those two bottles. They're, they're really hard to get. Sold them within twenty-four hours of getting them. Kind of chopped around to see what we should sell them for. I sold them for a hundred dollars more than what Cambridge had sold them for. One was a hundred dollars higher, one was two hundred dollars higher. And I probably could have charged more, you know, judging by how fast they went. But that was really exciting. I've never, never seen those bottles before, and to sell them, get that kind of gross profit, it's a pretty good feeling.
I think you could do a lot more of that.
Yeah.
I bet you could.
We're trying, yeah. So how it works is the more, the more you sell, like certain houses, like Diageo and stuff, the more hard-to-find product they're willing to send your way. Because they, they're selling it to us at cost, but then the markup is whatever, whatever we can get out of it. So we're going to be, we're going to be trying to do that. We are still working on the online order function, getting the website up and running. That should be going shortly. The goal is by the end of February, if not by the end of March, like to have it up and running by summer, hoping that goes hand in hand with people heading up north, wanting to order ahead and just pick it up and go. But we'll see how that goes. I have talked to some other liquor store managers that haven't had a good experience with online sales. They kind of get that the costs aren't worth the reward, so we'll be looking at that really close. If it's not, then we won't do online sales. So staff, staffing, we've, we just hired two more part-timers. We've got a lot of high morale. We've got a lot of great part-timers over there, full-timers, too. And I just want to bring it up, because I think it's important to recognize, you know, the job the staff does over there. They're ones doing, you know, creating people at the counter, ringing up the sales, keeping the shelves stocked. If you ever look at, like, the Google reviews, we've got a ton of really positive ones lately. Well, always, but really good ones lately. And in the store, I mean, I'll, I'll be in my office or on the sales floor, and just a number of times I hear people, you know, comment how great the store is and how excited they are. It's, it's really, it's really nice to hear. So I think there's a lot of positive feedback. Still get people complaining about having to walk to the beer cooler, being on this side of sixty-five, but guess what? They're still there complaining in person.
The only one I heard was you go in there thinking you're buying one thing, and you're going to be in there ten minutes, and a half hour, forty-five minutes later, you're still in there looking around.
That's what, that's why they got carts.
Yeah.
And those carts are, are being used a lot. And we, we went from, you know, the old store, maybe one out of fifteen people would grab a cart, and now it's like seven out of ten people grab a cart and they're, they're shopping. So it's, it's nice. You know, we used to give away a lot more boxes than we do now, because now we keep a bunch of boxes behind the counter to put people's, you know, merchandise in, because they're buying more than will fit in a, in a bag. I am a little concerned personally, just with price increases. Beer, beer always increases beginning of the year. Sometimes it sticks, sometimes it goes back down a month or two later. But, you know, as we all know, with inflation everywhere, prices of everything are going up. So I'm, I'm curious to see if that will and how it will affect sales. But, you know, the feedback we're getting so far is people understand, you know, why. And, you know, I have been, I do stop at other liquor stores occasionally, just kind of price shop and see what's going on. And we are comparable or better than most of the ones around here. So the only other thing I have is, you know, looking forward to getting some increased business once we get some signage along sixty-five. I know we're, we're all working on that, trying to get a billboard up, but I think that'll make a big difference, too, just because word of mouth is going great for us right now, and that's, that's, that's the form of advertising for the street. But to catch all that traffic heading up north, they kind of have to know we're there. And a billboard will really help make a difference there. And then the last, last thing I have is the thirty-day average for sales per day right now is eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars. And that's, that's, you know, every day since January first. If we were to continue that trend, which January is the slowest month of the year, February's not much better, but that would put us, if we continued that streak, at like four point two million at the end of the year.
So the, the only question I have is, are you fluctuating your hours over there? How come people are saying that they've been over at three-thirty and you've been closed the last few times they went?
That's one of the reviews.
That's one of the reviews. I mean, literally, Councilman Lundin is looking at your reviews as we speak.
So if you look at that, that is from when we moved to the new store, and that person didn't read the sign. They were at the old store.
Oh.
That's, that's an older review.
And this, this, this one was from two months ago.
Makes sense we had the right location.
Says closes at nine? Government-owned liquor stores suck.
Yeah.
Will not be visiting again. I, I don't think you close at nine.
So just, just to address, just to address that.
Ten on Fridays and Saturdays, is it?
We, yeah. So we, we close at nine o'clock Monday through Thursday. We're open till ten on Friday and Saturday. Sundays, we're open eleven to six, which is the maximum we can be open. Cambridge closes at nine o'clock Monday through Saturday, and they're open till five on Sunday. So we, we do get a lot of, a lot of people at the end, or people scrambling from... So we, we do get a lot of, a lot of, um, people at the end or people scrambling from Cambridge that, you know, just realize that they're closed. That person, I think, probably complains about a lot of government services. Would be my, my take on that, you know.
Yeah, see, I, I'm, now I'm getting into two years ago and whatever, but.
There should be a tab that you can sort them by most recent.
But other than the one saying at nine o'clock closing and complaining at three, three o'clock closing.
In the three-thirty wrong location.
That, those are, that everyone else is nice and big, love the selection of wines, fantastic store with excellent variety of liquors, lots of wine to select from, great customer service. I, everything else is all five, five plus, and, but your total review was four point three, I think that's, I don't, I don't, really never seen anybody's reviews at five, I've never seen it, it's.
Impossible.
Yeah.
My, my favorite part on those reviews is when, when I see somebody compliment the customer service or like friendly stand. That's, that's my absolute favorite, that's icing on the cake.
Well, they even said that they've even commented in the last two months that prices were better than they expected, so, thanks for heeding my warning.
Yeah, and our, our margins are, I, I believe, higher than where, where the goal was, too, but we'll, we'll wait to see that for sure. But it's heading in the right direction.
And then the only last question I got is you said it off mic, now I want you to say it on mic, between three hundred and fifty stores.
Uh, well, there is, there's an article on Bring Me the News that I stumbled across this afternoon, they were talking about the top, um, top twenty liquor stores in the state. This is based off of twenty-twenty sales, which are the, the latest available, anybody can look at from the, um, state number-wise, but for gross profit, it had the top ten. And it kind of stung me a little bit because we were eleventh place, um, we had thirteen point, um, three, three percent, uh, Mora was number ten at thirteen point three six percent, so they got us by point zero three, otherwise we would have been in the top ten, so.
Wait till we get the next one with this new store.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the next one to come out will be twenty-twenty-one, and that'll have, you know, a month and a half of the new store, but, you know.
I bet we're at nine.
Looking, looking forward to seeing what we can do, and, you know, I'm gonna do everything in my part with your guys' help and see staff's help to, to get there, you know.
Is there, is there any way we could get one of those portable signs just for, to, for temporarily, maybe see if we can park it in O'Reilly's parking lot, or anything that would help?
So unfortunately, our sign code does not allow for us to use sign even for the city, it, it's not permitted within our sign ordinance code.
Really?
Or I was waiting for Stephanie to say min dot.
We could, we could change that code, Dan, I'd be all for changing it.
We could change the code, or it could somehow show up and we don't know how it got there, just kidding.
I've tried that. Mine, mine is grandfathered in, so I could.
Janikler has one sitting out there all the time.
And I can, and I can have one.
How can they do it and we can't?
Because you're grandfathered and so is Jimmy's. Yeah, we already had them before, before the change happened. It must have happened sometime shortly before I came on the council.
Oh, you, you, you don't want to go to, you don't want to go to the sign discussion.
We didn't make that.
Mr. Burgley knows all about that one. That went for months and months and months.
That was before our time, Jimmy a nice time.
No, I'm serious, it, it was like a six-month process, we had to have a sign group that had to go and do sign studies, it.
What do you think of that sign ordinance there, Ms. Wood?
I think overall, this whole sign ordinance needs to be looked at because I think when we have a business come in, like we recently had, which was the hotel, the Best Western, wanted to put up their sign and it didn't quite meet the criteria because it was in the overlay district, however, it didn't really state what the requirements were, just that it had to be uniform with others. Well, when we look at some of the other businesses on the other side of the highway, I feel like they put in a lot of extra, um, nice materials that I'm not sure if they were required to do so, except for at the time they were. I think that the whole section needs to be reviewed to make sure that it's consistent and fair amongst what we're looking to achieve.
I think we should look into that. Well, I, I absolutely, there, there was, there, at this time when this was brought up, I don't know, you remember when, how long ago that was, Paul?
Well, we ourselves, didn't we ourselves bring it in recently, well, no, we talked about it again with the hotel, but we talked about, I don't remember the exact.
But this was, this was a few years ago, this was.
Yeah, we, we, we harshly upgraded that.
But there was, there was what they called sign pollution, so if somebody wanted to put stick-on letters on their windows of like the hardware store, that wasn't allowed because it's considered sign pollution and. I, I'm, I'm telling you, and, and I, I'll be honest with you, if you own that building and you want to put something in your window, put it in your damn window.
I, we did make an amendment, I believe, when I came from the, when we talked about the hotel project sign, or the hotel sign after the project. Um, but it is on, on our community development director's task list, list to look at, um, and revising, looking at it as a whole, I think is important to do and not just looking at it project-specific, because then I think what we've had in the past has been tweaked, but it really, now it doesn't work as a whole and give ultimate direction.
I think we should revisit the whole entire ordinance and make it an even playing field for everybody personally.
Yeah, I think.
All the sections are actually on the list to be reviewed.
Good.
If, if we could do that temporary sign thing now rather than waiting later, I mean, if we're looking at maybe a year out for a sign for liquor store, we can't wait that long.
Well, I think that, I'm sure that there is reasons why, and if you want to speak to why they don't allow those everywhere, um, and you do need to look at the businesses that weren't allowed to put it up, and then they put up these other nice signs, which it does look aesthetically pleasing to the eye.
Now, when we need it, we're just gonna dive right in there.
They're supposed to be temporary, not permanent.
They are temporary, they're on, they're on wheels.
I'm gonna let our sign next.
Right, but they.
They're on wheels.
Right, but.
They can't, they're not supposed to, I thought they weren't supposed to sit in the same spot for months, after months, after months.
It's a trailer, it's, it can be moved, I'd say that's temporary, I mean, I would concur. There was a time when I, when I, you guys might remember this, years and years and years ago, many years ago, and I, I took sheets of plywood and painted them yellow and then just painted black lettering on them, because I want, as a, when you're putting signs out, you want something that looks totally different, so. It did look nice by any means, but it caught your attention and it got the point across that we had, you know, whatever it was at the time, ten-dollar pizzas or something like that, and I just dug it in and put it right out in front of Riverside at the time, and I'll tell you what, it worked just crazy, it just worked great.
I think when we went through the sign thing, this was back when Roxanne was still here.
I don't even know who that is, that's how long ago that is.
I believe the hotel sign was with Sheila.
That was with Sheila, but, but the original sign, the original sign discussion, it took months and months to do, that's when Roxanne was still here.
That was with Sheila.
Yes.
That's how long ago that is.
But again, I don't think it was looked at as a whole, I think things were tweaked, um, within the section, but not the whole section reviewed.
So if you had to guesstimate on the last time it was reviewed, when would you say, as a whole?
As a whole?
Backs from Roxanne was here.
Just guesstimate. Sixteen, fifteen?
I don't know. The, the whole ordinance?
Yeah.
Way before that.
Way before that, like twenty-ten?
I would say two thousand and eleven would be my, would be my guess.
Oh, I wasn't even in the council, yeah.
God, that's over ten years old.
But it's on the list, just like our city code had a, had a thorough analysis, a legal review, and that final step is actually on our council agenda this evening. It's one of the things that needs to get done, takes a lot of time, and we're getting all those backburner items checked off one at a time.
Sort of the signs in the back of a pickup truck.
That's temporary.
That's mobile.
It's temporary, it's on wheels, but it's still, those black signs are, what I'm talking about isn't allowing, that's the reason we can have ours, is because it was, we had it.
Your grandfather did.
Yeah, right, but.
But right now, if you had a sign in the back of a pickup truck parked at O'Reilly's.
Wouldn't it be the same thing as having it sitting on a trailer, or not really?
No.
I would think so. I think, why not just, we just should change that part of the ordinance quick.
That's what I say we do.
I think, yeah, I think we should look at the temporary sign ordinance.
We can look at the whole.
But at the same time, now we turned away how many people here in the past, and when we need it, we're gonna hurry up and do this, how fair is that?
Well, we, why stall anymore because it was not fair, I mean, we give apologies.
It isn't fair, well, I guess we'd have to hand out a million apologies and.
Well, it's just trying to make an improvement, not only for us, but like she said, a new business opens and they have a grand opening, they want to put a temporary sign out there for a week or two.
Well, there are, there is the ability to do that, I mean, we do allow temporary signs, there's a permit application that they fill out, but there are temporary signs and there are some restrictions with it.
Well, Jimmy's is temporary.
Um, I think what she has is not a, not a temporary sign, like we do, you are allowed to leave that there because it's grandfathered in, it doesn't, it's not temporary.
Well, yeah, it is on wheels, though, but, yeah, it doesn't have to be.
But it's a.
It doesn't have to be.
It's allowed to be a permanent sign as a temporary sign.
Right, it's allowed to stay there.
So he could take the wheels off of it and just keep it there forever?
I.
That way, so we can see it. Now, now, when they, I see any retail meets built.
Then you're talking about a permanent sign, it's probably has to have all, that's not temporary.
He was told, Joel was told that he could have a sign up there, future home of Iceni Retail Meats. A certain person made a big stink about it, made him tear the sign up.
I can't speak, that was done before my time.
Yes, but that's, but I'm just saying, that, to me, if you're putting up, if you're building a building and you put a sign up that says future home of X, Y, Z, I, I don't see why you need to get a sign permit for that. I mean, that's only promoting, letting, allowing that business to promote itself. It's only temporary because nine times out of ten, as soon as they start breaking ground, that sign's gonna be in the way and it's gonna get tore down.
I mean, I think ninety-nine percent of the time, businesses have the best intentions and do, don't do things that could ruin it for others, but there is that small chance that you have people who would take a temporary handmade, hand-painted sign and leave it up indefinitely because it was a cheaper option to go.
Yeah, we just did that at the liquor store.
I think that's why those rules have been made, I think definitely be looked at and reviewed, but.
That's what I mean, I'm, we're not very clear here.
Okay, we're getting off topic now.
Those signs catch attention, though, too, if you notice that sign because it doesn't look like anything.
It looks crappy.
So the liquor store can do a temporary sign, then?
What's that?
Sounds like the liquor store could do a temporary sign, then?
I think that staff should review it, and if we want to have that section be the first section of city, of the zoning code that we review, I think we can start with that one, but we should. We should cease making small tweaks to it to benefit certain projects at that time and look at it as a whole, and I think that that could be the direction, so look at that section as a whole now and bring that board with her recommendations of that entire section.
But you said you allow it for like grand openings and things like that?
Yeah, there are, there are cer, I don't have, um, it's a certain amount of days that you can have a temporary sign, directional sign, like a grand opening sign.
Let's, let's have them review it, Dan.
Yep.
We did have grand opening signs up, but not on property that wasn't the city, so.
Yeah, I think.
We did have a grand opening sign up at our liquor store, and we had a sign up at our old store that also said we, we moved, those that fall under that temporary category, but to put one at O'Reilly's, that's not our property, so we haven't done that.
Okay.
Hey, before we get off the liquor store, I want to ask, where are we at with the billboard side of things?
Um, as far as like the punch list and everything?
Well, when we talked at the Gold City meeting, you know, we talked about the billboard.
Go ahead, Keith, throw me on the bus, I don't mind.
Yeah, um, well, as, as far as I know, like, uh, the mayor's talked to, um, P and M Trust to kind of see if they'd be willing. And he was told that someone had purchased it or leased it, but they hadn't done anything with it yet, I, I can let you answer that, yeah.
So what happened is I called P and M Trust, which they gave me the info of the leaser of that sign, and then I called him and he said somebody had already leased it, but they hadn't brought in a design or done anything with the billboard. Um, potentially, they leased those yearly, so, um, it was, he believed it was close to their year being up, so he would re-contact them, or in his words, he was, pushed them along to see if they were gonna do anything. Uh, and if not, he would contact me, um, I just encouraged that, uh, you know, if you let the city of Iceni put a billboard up there for the municipal liquor store, you could guarantee you were gonna have a tenant all the time. And he was very receptive to that, so, uh, and that was last week? Because I contacted Keith to let him know and Josie, I let her know, and hey, this is what I found out, so, uh, again, I could call him this week and see if he's got any legs on anything and let anybody know.
There was, I don't know if it's that sign or the one next to it, they were, they were putting new stuff on it on Sunday.
It was all black, it literally sits right outside P and M Trust fence. It was all black.
Yeah, like, say, they were putting signage up on one of them right over there on Sunday.
See, he pushed and then they decided to put something up.
So I, I don't know if it's that one or the one next to it.
You're gonna make me drive one by when I leave.
If you'd like, Mayor, if you want to share the contact, we can definitely keep on it and see, um, you know, when that lease, if they're not gonna do something or if they're willing to allow us to do something and.
Yes, I can do that, I can share that contact, absolutely.
Yeah, we can definitely assist with that.
I'll give it to you at the end of the meeting, I'll give it to both, yeah.
Okay.
My, uh, one real quick question on that, so Mike, when we were looking at, you know, whether the liquor store would increase sales enough to cover the cost of, you know, making that payment and stuff like that on the, the bonding that we did, I mean, what, where do we need to be, I mean? You know, I think this is great, we're looking really good, but it's also, this is also fresh and new, and so, I mean, are we hitting those goals that we needed to hit to kind of cover that additional cost of a big payment, or?
I'm, I'm optimistic.
Yeah.
I mean, this, it's difficult to know early on, and I would not put forth a definitive, we've made it or not made it until we've completed.
Yeah. No, not yet, it's true.
I would want to complete three full years in the new store, um, but I'd say right now, I like the way things look.
Okay.
I think, yeah, but I, I, I think a billboard south of town would really help.
For sure.
Um, even if it means us buying out the lease on that from the other person and just eating that cost, I.
I'll give you the contact and you guys can do your management.
Yeah, that'd really help, because, I mean, the, the whole premise of that store and that design and that location was, there's only a certain number of people in Iceni that we could sell to, and so if we really want to, we really want to make money on that store, we need that northbound traffic, we need the out-of-towners stopping there. And we built a store that can accommodate that and a store that can be an attraction in that regard, uh, but, yeah, we've got to make sure more of those out-of-towners who don't live anywhere near here can find us, billboard would go a long way toward that.
I mean, even if temporarily, we would have to go further south down sixty-five to get aboard.
Yeah, quarter mile is great, but even if it's four, seven, eight, whatever.
It's, it's still something.
Yep.
Yep.
And my intentions was to show the interest and severity of wanting that billboard.
Yeah.
And he was very receptive to both, so. Cool. Anything else? Let's move on to E five, doing business in Iceni update.
Um, so this is, uh, there's a resolution from two thousand and nine that requires the finance department to go through and review, um, vendors that we do business with, make sure they're current on taxes, utility bills, all that kind of stuff. Um, and so then I'm obligated by that resolution to update the council twice, twice per year on that, and we did our January review and we had, at the time of the review, we had one, um, one business that we do do business with that was, uh, delinquent on utilities and they, they have since gotten current, so. At this point, we have nothing to, uh, nothing to report on that, so.
Awesome. Questions on that? Let's move on to E six, then, special event permit discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and council, so, um, in current city code, um, for the special events code, uh, it establishes in there that city events are not required to submit for a special event permit. Um, however, this has been pretty common practice for city events, um, so street dances, all of that have, at least for the, the last handful of years, have submitted that. In speaking with Ms. Wood, she said that, um, previously it had been a beneficial way to let the city, to let residents and the council know about upcoming events that the city was planning. Um, that is no longer necessary for marketing, we obviously have a lot more avenues, uh, to be able to promote city events, so, uh, filling out those applications is pretty tedious, um, it takes a lot of staff time depending on what the event is. Um, so, uh, the request or, um, going forward is really just kind of getting your guidance on if you would like staff to continue submitting those applications, knowing that it is not required in code, um, and staff would continue working with all parties.
Where are we doing that?
Equipment requests, all of that, um, so just kind of looking for your direction on if that's.
So, so are we submitting these to ourselves, is that what we're doing?
Yep.
Why?
We've done it since I've been here in twenty thirteen, I'm not sure, my only thing was, um, I was told to do that, and I guess we never changed, and it was like, as Ms. Olson said, that part of like getting the exposure out there, but it does take an incredible amount of time. And, um, as you've seen in the past, we have, when we have changes, have brought that back for reapproval and things of that nature, but.
What's that famous same time as money? And we're wasting a lot of it.
I don't see the need for it, but I still think it should be brought up at the council meeting, so it's another way of getting the word out, hey, we got some live music coming to Iceni, so if it could be, but still mentioned. During a council meeting, rather than approving a special event permit for Joan and the Whales, um, you know, just.
Put in announcements or something.
Something.
The announcement section, or it could also be part of the park board update, um, under committee, committee update section, because most of those things are shared at the park board.
As if the paper decides to put something in there about that, you know, that's even more.
I was amazed that when I listened to the park board minutes, how many people actually listened to that.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
I was goofing around at those meetings. It's good conversation at Park and Rec, I like it. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Let's move on to the consensus I was gathering was, I, did I even ask that? Let's move on to the consensus I was gathering was, I, did I even ask that question? What was the consensus on that, do we need to keep doing that, you guys feel?
Uh, if it's not technically required to do it, then I don't think we.
I don't think we should either, I mean.
Maybe that's something to think about, that if we have other people that are trying to plan events, we're putting them through that same hassle factor, so is there some ways that we could maybe?
Shorten theirs.
Add a little bit more.
Shorten the hassle factor.
There we go.
Lot of it's, uh, cause I used to fill them out for remember odds every year, until it just got to be conflict of interest.
Yeah.
But a lot of them, a lot of it's safety stuff.
Yeah.
Where, you know, it's safety stuff and quality of the experience for the people that are gonna be there, you know, like toilets and stuff like that. Um, I don't know if there's anything that really can be cut out, from my experience filling them out, it really covers everything that should be covered.
What's nice about it is, if you're putting on a new event or a new event, it helps you have a checklist, you know.
It's just the difference is, is we're submitting them to ourselves versus them submitting to them, you know, to us.
But I mean, far as making it easier for them to still submit theirs, I don't know, I don't see anywhere where you could cut anything, make it a shorter process for them, I guess.
Yeah, I could certainly take a look and see if there's anything that could be cut out, but I do think it is pretty bare bones as is.
Okay.
Um, the difference in having is that then the council is aware of those events, which you guys would be aware of city events because they do get discussed.
Right.
Um, so, and, you know, we already work closely with the police chief, with, um, you know, the fire chief and all of that with public works on those things, whereas somebody coming in with a different event would be requesting those items, so they would still need to, to be having that party contact.
Thank you.
So what's the consensus on that still, I don't think we came to that, we're just gonna.
I, I don't think, I don't see a need for it, but I think it should still be brought up at a council meeting in some form or fashion, that.
I, I would agree with that.
It's been doing, done the whole time I've been here, I would agree with that.
Okay.
I think it's a good checklist though.
Okay, so I'm going forward, then I will not, um, put applications forward for city run events, but we will keep it on the announcements around the committee notes.
Absolutely. So let's move on to, uh, E seven, the bulletproofing and window tinting council chambers, I chuckle when I say that. Paranoid Collison, I mean, Councilor McCollison.
Mayor and Council, I just went and researched just the economic piece of the puzzle after we discussed that there, um, as far as the bullet resistant steel, um, so just breaking it down between that and then the bullet resistant windows into the council chambers. The steel itself, material wise, I just got one quote from metal coatings, cause I don't wanna get too hard into it, um, was sixty-three hundred dollars for rifle rated steel at the council, just for the council chambers, so sixty-three hundred there. It's five thousand for a handgun rated one, um, and that doesn't include their customizing the outlets in there, so I didn't get a price on that, cause I didn't wanna get that far into it. The windows themselves are around forty thousand dollars for the four windows.
Jesus.
And I did not get these, cause we got that, we can, if you wanna go further into it, we can, but we got those, that's all, just those windows and that.
So is that four, is that four, or is that ten thousand a piece?
They're ten thousand a piece.
Okay.
So they're ten thousand a piece, so guessing between just those and that would be in that fifty thousand dollar mark. Um, does include, like I said, the lowers which we discussed too. One other option that I looked at and did get quotes was just, um, from a safety standpoint, not necessarily, you know, covering versus concealment, right? So your conceal, concealment piece, you know, that, the safety concern is, we aren't paying attention to what's happening in the hallway, but you can stand in the hallway and see exactly what's going on in here, would be a mirrored window tint on these five windows, that's it. And a frosted window tint on all the lowers around, um, you know, frosted would be like something like this, so you can't see in from the outside, you know, and here's your one-way mirror tint, and that's thirteen hundred dollars to do those windows, so that's not exactly the same, but it's one step in a direction. So, I guess that's what I got for numbers, I can work on it more, if you guys are interested in entertaining all that, I can get more on that, but I just wanted to bring back what we have so far.
Everybody's looking at you, Councilor McCollison.
Well, like I said before, that goal setting, it could be done in steps, so maybe just do this for, I'll get a hard number for that.
So why wouldn't we temporarily do the one-way mirror and the frosted windows?
Yeah.
And then slowly take steps to what you're thinking.
Yeah, are you okay with that?
Why, why window, why?
Yeah, I mean, so.
I mean, with the, the tint, the tint, they, they're not gonna be able to see in through the glasses really aim.
Can we have a fundraiser?
So.
And first of all, why making those windows bulletproof doesn't make the door bulletproof.
Nope.
No, but those are pretty solid core doors.
Right.
Nah, you put a slug through it pretty easy.
I mean, the principle is, is the odds of somebody blanketly shooting versus, like right now, you can see exactly what's going on.
Yep.
I think that's a big concern, so, the concealment, which means that you can't see, i- is one step, and it's economical, you're talking thirteen hundred dollars versus forty thousand dollars, so.
Yep, I think that, I think that'd probably be sufficient enough.
I think concealing us temporarily is a good idea. And then if we slowly wanna take that step towards the other, then we do so, but I think.
I think that's a good idea.
If we could conceal ourselves in here, Dan.
Well, I'm, I'm fine, relaxed.
So am I, I don't know why we even had that conversation personally, but.
Because it's happened in the state of Minnesota, more than once.
It has.
So.
I mentioned the New Hope one, I don't remember when that one was, but. That mirrors.
You know, they wouldn't have to do anything with these outlets, cause there's, there's probably a dead space behind there by this much.
Well, you won't be able to reach in there to plug it in.
No, you would, they would take, they would take these out, these panels, and put the steel in between this wall in the front.
So if you're interested, I can have them, I'm gonna actually give us a hard quote on that piece, I just got a generic ballpark idea, so if you want, we can.
I, I, I think we should take baby steps here, I think we should conceal ourselves, and if you wanna do the hard quote later on, then, then let's keep moving that direction, but fifty thousand dollars seems crazy to me.
Just six thousand just for this, I'm all right with that.
And then when you get in those windows.
Window tents and stuff, that'd probably be good enough, yeah, yep.
So concealing, you're saying thirteen hundred and six thousand?
Yeah.
Seventy-three hundred, you'd be.
That's pretty cheap security.
I'm okay with the windows being tinted and stuff, but I don't wanna spend much more than that thirteen hundred bucks. I think that gives you at least a, there's.
I think that's, is that thirteen hundred for all of them or per window?
No, it's thirteen hundred for that mirror tint on, um, these windows here, so you can't see it, and then the frosted. All of them, so all, the whole thing, plus the frosted lowers, it's all thirteen hundred for all of them.
Could we, could we call somebody to do that? I mean, that's, did you?
We'll, we'll get quotes, I got one quote from one company.
I bet we could get that cheaper, you know.
Oh, maybe, yeah.
I bet we could.
I know, it's, it's like to do three windows in a two-door car, it's two hundred and forty bucks, thirteen hundred for all them, that seems pretty reasonable, so.
But I think that's a step in the right direction anyway, and then we can move on to something else in the future maybe if we want, but.
I agree. If.
Well, right, but, I mean, I don't, I don't think Dan's crazy for bringing it up or anything, I mean, I think.
I don't think he's crazy, and I still chuckle about it.
There's other, there's also.
It's not us we're thinking about, it's everybody that is here and, you know.
There's al- other council chambers that have already done that step.
We want, you know, Travis, we don't want him just to be out there with, you know, we wanna have, we don't wanna just rely on you to keep us all safe, you know, so.
We want you to duck and cover too, Chief. Chief, under here, quick. Consensus ours is to, to get the quotes on the, the windows, on tinting the windows? I like the one-way, we can see out, but they can't see in.
That's good, we just might have to adjust some of the lighting in the display cases, cause you gotta make sure that light isn't duller than the light in here, right, cause the one-way mirror piece, so, but the, the only other thing might need different light bulbs to make sure that you have enough light in those display cases to mirror with the lights over here.
That's pretty inexpensive.
So is that the consensus, just to look at the tinting, or do you want me to get a better quote, harder quote for that, that piece?
I don't think we're gonna get a better one than metal coating, to be honest.
I'm for both.
But I would go both, yeah.
What I, I, I just said metal coating is gonna be a ballpark price, I didn't have to come up and look at it, so if you want, I can have it, potentially give you something more solid, you'd like to move that direction to.
I'd just be interested in the windows.
Yeah, me too, I.
I would be in the windows. We're gonna see them coming. They won't see us. You could be ducked and covered by them, Chief.
You won't, you won't see them coming, all you're gonna see is all that stuff you see right now.
I see we have a practice room, Chief.
I'm kinda getting a split consensus here, Chief, so I don't know which direction they wanna go.
I say windows.
Windows.
Just the tinting or the whatever.
Windows, metal, Councilor Landee, you wanna weigh in?
Just windows.
Windows? Windows it is.
Okay. Same thing as it was the last time. I tried.
We're on East Eight, splash pad discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
There you want to spend some money.
That's for the community, there's a difference.
Um, so diving deeper into splash pad discussion, um, so following up on the council's request to look deeper at costs, um, we have gathered, um, a better picture of what the splash pad could look like, so, um, at its base, what we submitted to, um, get bids were a fifty-four hundred square foot space, um, which is what has been discussed over the past few years, um, the same size as Princeton. Um, that includes, that separates out into about three thousand square feet of play area, um, we would add in a safety perimeter with some landscaping and unenclosed, so just something to kinda block, um, the edges, but not to be a full gate. Um, perimeter seating and shade features for guardians, a user activated system, and a minimum of six play features for different ages. So outlined below are the base costs for the feature, as well as some options to add on. Uh, the base feature does not include a water recycling system, um, but it would instead discharge into an infiltration system, um, some kind of drain system, or we could use it for, um, something like a rain garden. Um, so there is some environmentally friendly aspects that we can build in, build in. Um, it is also based on being unattended and having free play, so not charging for attendance. Uh, so if you look at the estimated costs, we are working with, right now, we have a two hundred and eighteen thousand dollar budget, so just with groundwork and installation, we basically meet that. Um, what the bids came in, then with water play features, adding another seventy-five thousand on top of that, uh, with those six features, uh, would bring us to about two hundred and ninety thousand for the cost of that splash pad. So if you look at option number one, uh, that Ms. Strand passed out, that's pretty comparable to what we'd be looking at, uh, with that two hun- with that two hundred and eighteen thousand dollar budget, so if we cut back on those water features to get down from that two ninety to what is budgeted, we'd be looking at more of the ground sprays, um, as you see in the bottom, that Blaine has, um, adding in, you know, a little bit, using a little bit more of that budget, if we could afford to get those taller features, similar to what Cologne has on that top image. And it would be a smaller footprint to be able to get those, um, taller water features in there. So, yeah.
Is there any grant fun- funding that you can find for that two hundred and eighteen thousand?
Yes, so, um, we will be looking at the DNR's Outdoor Recreation Grant, which would double that budget, so if you look at option number two, um, on the sheet that Ms. Strand gave you, that would be more comparable to what we could get with getting that match funding.
But that would still be two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
We would be putting, yep, the two eighteen towards it, so we'd be working with about, if we got that match, um, funding, we would be looking at four hundred and thirty-six thousand. So we'd be able to get bigger features, I'm.
That was from two thousand and eighteen, so we could probably add another hundred grand on those prices.
So, yeah, so, sorry, I missed kinda what you said, um, so, uh, what I kind of outlined too was just some additional cost considerations, so, um, looking at the water reuse system, the recycling system that was discussed, that is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, um, add-on. Um, if you were, you would then need to have a seasonal water tester, so about twenty thousand dollars there for somebody to work that for the summer. Um, rubberized non-slip surface for, you know, the safety precautions, um, is a sixty-five thousand dollar add-on, and then having a seasonal attendant, if you did want it to be manned, um, it's about twenty thousand dollars as well. So ultimately, what we kind of want to, um, look at or get your feedback on is what would you like us to move forward with? What would you like us to, um, look at for the ultimate picture of the splash pad? Is a, do you want us to move forward with the, looking at the two hundred and eighteen thousand with what that would be, assuming we did not get any match funding? Um, or what kind of are the priorities there?
I mean, like, I looked at the two hundred and eighteen thousand budgeted, I mean, at, at that, and if we could get matching funds, that would only be a hundred and nine thousand, rather than two hundred and nineteen, eighteen.
If we sta- yes, if we, if we built it based on the two hundred and eighteen thousand budget and did not put anything else towards it to meet that four thirty-six, then yes, it would pull back our cost.
That would be assuming that you would want option number one as what your ultimate goal was, what kind of water features to have, which is just the spray.
And then how much month are we gonna pay, if you have, if you did that option, that's not recycled water, right, so you're, you have to pay for the water every month that we use it, so that's, what, like fifteen we talked about before? Fifteen thousand a month or something, or?
I don't know those costs for.
Fifteen thousand for how many months, how many months is that? May, June, July?
Yeah, the four weather months.
If I remember, when I ran the numbers previously, we had talked about a, a recycling system that was considerably more expensive, and my recollection was our worst case scenario would be like thirty thousand for the, for the year, like for the summer season. On, uh, cause my recollection was is that we would, I think I recall saying to the councils, if we, if we just, if we just let the water go, I can do that for ten or fifteen years before I hit the cost of the recycling system. I'd have to go back and look at those numbers, but it was, you could basically just let the water go down the drain for a long time before you hit the cost of the recycling.
And then you also look at in ten, fifteen years, it's probably time to upgrade it anyway.
Well, there's the ongoing maintenance, yes, it's, you know.
And is there, so the, the pumps, is it all? I mean, there's gotta be control valves, all that stuff, the controls, sprays and stuff, there's gonna be
monthly payments with that as far as electricity goes, those pumps?
I believe it was about twenty thousand a month to run, is from what I remember.
But that was water use?
Recirculation system, right? For a recirculation system, I believe so, yes.
That's gonna be a lot more power usage on a recirculation, plus filters and everything else, where, where, we're just pumping and dumping, you're not, all you're doing is running the controls, running, that's gonna probably be mental electrical use.
So it's expensive, it's, no matter what option you want, it's expensive to run it?
Not, no, that, that's recirculation system she was referring to?
Yep.
There's a, that does a lot of electricity, and that's a filter.
She was saying it's twenty grand a month for that, and you're saying it's ten grand a month for.
For water use, just water, not the electricity bill.
But electricity is probably gonna be minimal.
Ten, twenty thousand a, a month.
Yeah, total.
Or, yeah, well, no, I'm saying that wrong, so we said twenty, well, twenty thousand a month, you said, right?
That's what I believe I read.
So anywhere, so depending on which one we do, we're looking at either ten thousand a month or twenty thousand a month, just to.
At minimum, yeah, that's just water usage, not electricity.
Yeah, so the other thing to consider, the other thing to consider too is, is that we don't have to charge ourselves for water. If you don't, councilors should understand it as a de facto transfer between two funds, but nothing that requires us to do that, we would still want to meter it so that we can report correctly to the DNR about how much water we've drawn and how much water's gone out and all those things, um, but we wouldn't have to charge ourselves.
Over at the, uh, garden, community garden, it says, don't drink the water, because it's not potable, or whatever you call that, is it, would this have to be potable water, or?
Yes, it would have to be potable.
What's that?
Yes, it would have to be.
Would have to be?
I would imagine the state would require it to be.
And all that type of stuff.
You know, darn well they're gonna drink it.
And that's one of the concerns with the recirculating system also, is that we have to maintain the, the level of quality for health standards.
So, so obviously the.
From our water system and would be potable, yes.
So obviously, the staff's direction is, don't recycle this water, is what I'm gathering.
Well, I'd also like to just, these two systems don't necessarily mean less water, um, it's just more features that are spraying the water.
Cost.
So there might be as many sprays on this one, spraying water without any, but it's just, doesn't have the fun flower that's, you know, making it spray. So it's the features that we're talking about, not so much the water in these two situations, I guess.
Well, I think fun features are not the. Well, I think fun features are not the, the draw is the water, so I don't need fun features, I don't think.
We could put a sprinkler out there.
I like your thinking, that's pretty good.
I got a compromise for you guys, because I'm, I'm not gonna be for this either way. The only way I would be for this is if it was a grant, you know, if we got a hundred percent grant on it, then, and it was the cheapest option we could get for, for using the water. But, but I do have another idea that, what if you had a community pool? I mean, how much is it to put just a pool in? And that's something I could see, I mean, everybody can use a pool. If you're, if you're eighty years old or if you're eight years old, you could use a pool. No adult's gonna go and use this, I mean, this is only for the kids. But I mean, a pool, the entire community could, could enjoy it. So I mean, and I think it would be more cost-efficient, right? So I mean, or not really?
No.
You got a liability there.
Pools.
Somebody drowns.
Pools are very expensive.
Are they?
Yeah, basically, full, you're gonna, you're gonna have full-time employee, just?
Yeah.
With lifeguards, even if it's just a waiting pool, the infrastructure itself is very expensive. And then to maintain it, if there's any cracks or just the water usage alone, and you also have to chlorinate it and make sure that it's tested regularly. So that, and generally, they're heated in Minnesota, so that brings on an entirely new cost.
Okay. Maybe that was a stupid idea then, but.
No, I like, I like your, I like your idea. I mean, I think, to me, I, I agree with you to that extent. But I do know a pool's gonna be very, very, very expensive top rate.
Trying to think of something that everybody could use, that would be nice. But, yeah, I just, I don't, I just don't wanna spend the money on, on that, that kind of cash, but.
I would be, I, personally, I'd be at option one, try to get a grant for matching on option one. I, if it goes over, goes over, great, we can always add on to it. We can always do something different. If it doesn't, and we're just maintaining it, then we're not out, two-hundred thousand. You know, that's just my looks, look at it, so.
I, I think, just be mind, be mindful of where the money is coming from that is budgeted for the two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand. Mike, is that coming from park dedication funds? No, it's coming from the CIP?
No, so that's coming out of Fund Nine Twenty, so those dollars are almost exclusively either levy or assessment dollars originally.
Okay.
One thing to do, keep in mind, we already do have that in the budget, to be budgeted. It's not like we're adding it. Just, but, I know Mayor Johnson, this is one of his things, and he's known, I've fought this thing from day one on him. I, but I do know that I have talked to people, and they do wanna see something like this.
If it were up to me, I'd rather not have the fight with any of you. I'd just rather, I, to be honest with you, I'd say, "Well, you don't want it, you don't want it, let's move on." But the community is up and down my back wanting this thing.
And that I do have to attest.
I'm gonna push for the community.
I've heard that more than once, and not from the same people.
And I, yeah, I've heard the same thing from many people throughout the community. I also will note that in looking at the cities around us that do have Splash Pads, it is, they are very favorable. So people typically will make a lot of remarks on Facebook about how happy they are that the city brought that in, how great it's been to have that in their city. So it, they do seem to be, to get a lot of positive reviews once they are there.
We can put on the fence or on your Jimmy's Pizza specials for lunch, come and get a pizza at lunchtime. No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, Jimmy, it, it brings business into other businesses.
Yeah.
It brings, it brings other people into other businesses.
Somebody else, 'cause he's not for this, so we'll put somebody else's business on.
You'll have to get your antler on there.
What did the, what did the Blaine one cost?
The Blaine one, they did not have their figures posted for it. But that was more just to show that with that, with the current budget that we have, we'd be looking at mostly having those, those types of features, so having the ground sprays. If we reduce that footprint though, from being the, the three-thousand-dollar play space that had been discussed, if we reduce that, then we could put more of that budget towards getting bigger features.
What did Princeton spend on this?
Um, I, for some reason, wanna say four-hundred thousand dollars, but that was in two thousand and three, I believe, two thousand and four. So I feel like it's so hard to cost compare, because the timeframe is so, so long ago that the costs just don't compare anymore.
Yeah, if you look at these, like, two thousand and eighteen, four hundred grand, you can add probably another hundred grand to that, I'm sure.
Those were also, I do wanna note on those, option two, both of those had the recycling system. So that being a very large expense.
Right, I mean, like, City of Cologne, they put in for a hundred and seventy-five thousand, but how long ago was that?
Yeah, that was, I think, twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen.
Yeah, so, like I say, I'm sure it's gone up, just like everything, you know, quite a bit.
And I would be, wouldn't be a bit surprised that, you know, we should be able to maybe add options later on down the road on the smaller one, anyway. I think that can be addressed at that point. So I'd be, personally, I'd be at option one, look for, try to get a matching grant.
I, I do wanna say that after speaking with the DNR representative, I think we're also, when we're competing for these grants, we need to make sure we're competing with, they like to fund big projects, they like to fund things that are unique. So just, in some aspects, option two makes it easier to get a grant, because it would allow for more creativity, but I think we could definitely still try with option one.
So we'd have to pay two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand of the four-hundred-and-thirty-six? And keep our fingers crossed we get grant money to cover the rest?
Yes, and then if we didn't get the grant funding, we would go with option one.
Yeah, yep, so that's, that's kind of what we're looking at here, is, is the direction of number one something that the council would want us to work towards? If it was, then we would put in for that funding to match that full two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-dollar budget to be able to amplify it with four-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars.
So why wouldn't we try for option two to try the big thing to get?
Yes.
And if we can't get it, then we go down to one?
Exactly, so. Do we wanna, yeah.
Did she, 'cause I, my mind's going a million miles an hour right now, so.
She said we kinda wanted to do it, I don't know what kinda means, but.
Well, that's what they'd like to do, but they're looking for our direction, I think, is what that means.
Yes, is, does this seem like a feasible project? Would you be in favor of this project and seeing that footprint? Or would you rather we hold off, try to find more money for it? More so just looking for directions, should we move forward with this being potentially what we will be building if we do not get funding? And of course, I would still go to council for approval, but just for us to be able to move forward and apply for a grant.
Paul keeps looking at me like, "What are you, you gonna say something?" I know.
I wanna, I'd like to hear from Mike. For money-wise, going with like, say, option two? Well?
What I?
'Cause we, we have two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand in the budget already set aside for this project.
Correct.
So.
So that leaves us with two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand.
What I would recommend, and it's this, in my mind, this is kinda like with the liquor store, where it's like, let's just get it in the ground, make sure we can make money, then we can worry about doing the extra stuff, right? To my mind, Splash Pad is kinda the same thing. If we've got two-hundred-and-eighteen, and we've already cash-filled that, and we understand that fits in that thirty-year time horizon, right? That this works in our capital improvement plan, let's put that in the ground. But along the way, let's also try to get some grant funding. If that works out, great, but if it doesn't, I think, I think what they're really trying to get to is, "Are you okay with the potential that it's just the two-eighteen?" I would rather not go back for more money. I think Steve also, I think Steve also got that right, is, is that, you know, if we put this down, and it's small, but it shows to be popular, you can put another pad right next to the other one. If it's really that, if it's really that popular, and we decide that it's that good of an investment, we can allocate some more money in the future again. But I, I personally would prefer to stick to the, the two-eighteen, and then if we're gonna go over it, do it through grant funding.
I agree with that, I think that we should do that, and I think we should not charge ourselves for water, and I think we should, see how it goes, like Mike says.
I would agree with that.
Okay. That being said, some of the other questions that we had kind of left up in the air were kind of those smaller pieces of, do we want it to be staffed or not staffed?
I don't think we can afford staffed.
I don't think we can afford to staff.
Unstaffed.
And then admission fees were kind of the other thing in the air.
What's that?
Admission fees, do you wanna?
Well, then you'd have to have it staffed.
No, and we'd have to have it staffed at that point.
If you charge admission fees, you might be able to afford to have it staffed, though.
It doesn't, it doesn't typically, though, so.
It doesn't?
No, he brought that up the last time.
There's so many of those around that are free.
Then if it's popular, how do we afford to add on to it unless we get that grant money, I guess, is what we look at?
Yeah, you also hit that barrier of people not coming because if there's a fee, and people not being able to come because there's a fee. So you just kind of limit yourself.
All I know is that, whatever that thing is going on for bunker is packed. If you ain't there by seven o'clock in the summer, you ain't getting in there.
Bunker Beach. Yeah, Bunker Beach.
Yeah, I know, I know that for a fact.
Yep.
If you don't get there by seven o'clock, you ain't sitting there. And I mean, you know, you gotta look at, there's people from Iscany that drive there to go do that.
But that's, it's basically a water park.
It is, it is a water park.
It's not a Splash Pad.
No, but it's still part of that.
I'd go put my lounger in there and sit in our Splash Pad. Let my kids run around like they're crazy.
Great.
So what I'm hearing is?
They're crazy, but.
Move forward with the goal to produce something at that two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars. Let's see what we get for grant funding, and then we'll, we'll re-approach.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to E-nine, the Union Negotiation Team and PD Staffing Discussion.
Mayor Council, this was, the Union Negotiation Team was brought back from goal setting, and then I had an added thing of talking and, or discussing PD staffing after talking with Chief Myers about what the goals and objectives are for the number of patrol officers that we have on duty for different shifts.
I totally dismissed that.
Sorry, sorry.
Something about staffing.
He missed it too.
No, I already know what it is, it was something about staffing with our patrol do, our cars.
Right, so one of the things when Chief Myers and I were talking recently about looking at overtime and staffing levels, as you know, what was shared at goal setting, we put together, everybody collectively, works with Becker and myself to put together a comprehensive staffing organizational chart that expands years, because it's helpful for in-budgeting, you know where we're going, et cetera, et cetera. Well, when we were talking about the staffing of the patrol officers, they work twelve-hour shifts, and looking at what currently we are at with overtime, and sometimes we go over on overtime within the PD budget, ultimately, what is our goal, and we actually didn't know exactly what council's goal was for how many cars they want on. So I guess that is our question to the council. If we have twelve-hour shifts that work from four AM to four PM, or four PM to four AM, how many patrol cars on duty is the council wanting to have to offer public service?
What's Chief Myers' recommendation? I wouldn't, I don't have a feeling like, well, I want three cars, I mean.
In the evening, you have, right now?
Two.
Two.
In, in theory, we have two, minus training time, vacation time, and all the other stuff.
Yeah.
Just the principle of having one, you know, if we have one officer in town, whether they're tied up on something else, but if you have a priority call, crimes against person, you know, significant call, our response time for our officer may be thirty seconds, but the actual response time for that call is dependent on whoever we're calling in to assist that officer. Because we're not necessarily sending one, one Iscany officer into a violent scene.
Right.
They're waiting for a deputy to come from?
God only knows where.
Who knows?
Yeah.
So that's why I try, like, as far as we're trying to staff, but it's running two, but we're vacations and sick time, or trainings and whatnot. So right now, as far as operationally, the only time that I'm actually backfilling if somebody takes off is gonna be Friday and Saturday nights, those four-to-fours on Fridays and Saturdays and so on. Tuesday went, Monday, Sunday, Monday, Sunday through Thursday, if there's vacation or training, but you figure every officer has two-hundred hours of vacation time, plus other hundred hours or eighty hours of training, we're not filling those, so if there's just one officer on it that night. Now during the daytime, at four AM to four PM, you know, we rely a little bit on myself and lieutenant and investigator, because we're in the office, so we have a little bit more luxury. We only have one day car on at a time, there's only one patrol officer on each time. And that's including on Saturday and Sunday mornings from four AM to four PM. So that's where we're at right now. So as far as, that's how we're operating, but like I talked to Joe, our city administrator, Joe C. That, just trying to see what council's expectations are, so we can kinda go forward with our planning on staffing levels. I know you had brought that up last year, on some of those questions on that. If you figure, we have ten, ten officers, and with, on a low side with vacation time and training, that's two thousand hours of vacancy, right? So even at ten, we're still, just to fill that minimum of two officers, we're short one, if you're just looking at the big numbers. So you still have to play that game of, we're doing twenty-four-hour coverage. Just because we have two officers that are nights, doesn't mean that there's three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year where there's always gonna be those two unless we backfill it somehow with some other means.
Well, there becomes a point in time where you have officers working so much overtime, where you could hire another person, because their overtime is that time and a half, plus their crane comp time in lieu of that if they wanted. And we wanna make sure the health and safety of all the officers are not being overworked, because that's not good either. So with knowing the council's objectives of how much coverage you want, then we can put together a really good, comprehensive plan on how much staffing that they need, and perhaps, I know we're just approving it this evening for our staffing organizational plan, but maybe we need to bump some of that forward and hire another person to ensure, and then we can work within our budget too, as we have planning for next year, to make sure that we are having adequate coverage for what council desires to have. We're not overworking any of our current staff that we have, or putting too much taxing on our lieutenant and our chief, who are filling in maybe more so than they need to be because of the vacations, the trainings, and not having enough bodies. So we just wanna make sure we're all on the same page.
I personally like to see two officers on, that's my opinion.
During the day? I mean, they have two on at night.
Well, they have one on night.
One during the day. Do they have two on at night? 'Cause from what I'm hearing, they don't.
Is outside of those two to three hundred hours per officer, depending what they're, they're out, so. So you figure there's two night officers.
And not to mention, we're down a cop right now.
We're down a cop, so, you know, that's, there's significant, there's time.
More overtime if you can get someone to cover that shift, if he's on vacation for a week.
Right.
Well, you always have Friday and Saturday covered with the two, no matter what, right?
I wouldn't say no matter what, because now that we're short one, that's our priority, a hundred percent, yes. It's just, practicality, sometimes it doesn't happen, but.
What would you like, what, where do you see the need for more?
Well, I like that, that basic principle of having a minimum at night of two officers, right? But in order to achieve that, we gotta look at what is our vacation use time, and how, how can we make that work on a full-time staffing plan? Because trying to rely on, you know, six hundred hours, just planning on, say, those two night guys, vacation and training, six, six hundred hours of, in theory, overtime, just to cover those, is, that's just the one shift, not including your day shift or other stuff. It's a little excessive for what we have as a department to tend to fill, right?
And if we're paying just as much overtime as it would be just to employ another officer, then why aren't we employing another officer?
And we're not quite there yet, I do wanna bring that up, we're not quite there yet, but we are approaching that, and we wanna have a game plan based off all the objectives of council. If we do get there, or as we really do encourage retention and longevity, and we hope that the officers we have stay a very long time, it gets amplified, because the longer they're here, the more vacation time they accrue.
Does, do they want that overtime? I mean, do they like to have that overtime? It depends, like any other entity, you're gonna have the one or two, yes, and.
But them one or two are gonna get burnt out eventually too.
I mean, Joe C. did have the numbers, I mean, it is the trend even over every year that we have the, a few that do and a few that don't. And we have had to, in some of these cases, you know, mandate overtime, it's not our first choice. And there's a few times I don't like doing that, and that's not a good plan. But in a twenty-four-hour, seven-day week coverage, business that we're in, it happens sometimes.
So, like, if you had two patrol officers during the day, you know, and two at night, would that ease some of that?
It would ease it, but we, we just know that we'd have to be able to do some flexibility, and if somebody's on vacation, what do we do, right?
Right.
That's the other plan, and what are we gonna do with that? Because even with two on during the day and two on at the night? Cause even a two on during the day and two on at the night, there's still gonna be the vacation and training time that gotta work around.
So you'd almost rather, you'd, you'd almost rather have three on at night and keep the one at night during the day, I mean? In theory?
Possible, yes.
Because if someone's on vacation during the day, you got three other people that are possibly able to, that are already there.
Yeah, except for Saturday and Sunday, but yes, you're right. You really need that many?
The other option is to look at part-time officers, although that does come with not as great of benefits as having a full-time officer.
And then they leave. You got all that time and money invested in, you know?
That's why we went away from it. And I guess my thought process was kinda the opposite of yours, Dan, I mean, I think one during the day is probably, to me, that seems like plenty, hasn't it, I mean, especially if you guys are there. When we're there, cause again, the issue is, is if there's one officer during the day, they're busy, don't get me wrong. Yeah. They're busy and if there's a priority call, usually between four and six, there's only one of them, but that's our lowest call volume, so. Sure. From a service provider, I think I'm okay with that for what we have for our economics and then during the day, you're right, if there's a priority call, we have. People will actually, even Officer Morgan will come out of the school on priority calls during the day. So up, outside of that, but then Saturday, Sunday, we have one on during the day. Do they, do they have to work that twelve hour shift, is that part of the deal or, I mean, cause I mean, is there some time like where you said four to four is kinda that shift for the evening, so. I mean, you're starting one at six, right, so you're kinda staggering that a little bit, does he end at four too, or, or is there time like at? I was starting at six to be myself. Okay. So I'm just calling myself and I come in and then the other ones come in there, so that's where that extra person is.
Well, how come you don't come in at five?
No, I'm kidding. But, I mean, is there, so at night when you have two officers on, is there time where we don't really need both in the evenings, like, if, it's after two PM or after the bars closed, do we really need? Just when we change that, it is actually that four to six mark, right? It's that four to six mark, there's also a busier time between four PM and six PM. Okay. That's actually one of the busier times, so it's call volume, not significant calls, but your actual man hour calls, so it's nice to have that. And that time, usually the lieutenant's in till six o'clock as well, so there's actually under full shift, there are only three officers on. Okay. So we can't really, you don't think we can cut part of those evening hours to try to get rid of some of that overtime and try to have these guys have less hours to where they're not getting burnt out, but. It's, it's, the problem's running the twenty-four hours, seven day a week schedule for officers, you know, like I, right with Josie, with Josie, if we ran, say, ten hour shifts, so you can stagger them like that, but. In order to have the same amount of coverage on a ten hour shift, just the way it all works out, you have to increase your complement by twenty-five percent. Just cause ten hours doesn't work out that well, just when you stagger it out loud there. So eight hours works, the, eight hours and twelve work good, um, but I would not entertain eight hours for my patrol officers, we lose them all. If we went that way.
So, do you think and add, add, you need, you're short one, obviously now, that, that's filled, do you think, in adding one more position?
We are scheduled to add one in twenty twenty-four on the budget, uh, staffing plan that we put together in nineteen, so.
Is that too far out?
Yeah, I think it's too far out.
Well, that's why we wanna make sure that we have the exact expectations of council, um, and I mean, for the last three years, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one, we have. Um, a little over a thousand hours of overtime for those years, that's half of a full-time person. So we can keep moving with that, um, we will probably be going over as we have gone in the past and it does depend if we have, if we are short staffed or not. Um, and make it to that twenty twenty-four, we just needed to know that that is the direction, uh, that we will continue probably within a couple of years to see that going over what we had put in as our actual budget. Or we'll have to really ratchet down and that again comes back to what's your expectation, so Chief Myers knows who to staff and if we're not needing two people during the day, if that one truly is just a backup. If that person's on vacation or training, then he has that direction, maybe we can ratchet it down if we're full staffed.
But, uh, I was just gonna say something, I forgot now.
Where does vacation fit into that, do these guys, can they go on vacation when they want, or is that?
Well, they'll put in a vacation request and, but the vacation request, I mean, it doesn't make any difference when it is, is, let's say they're two night guys, as long as it, they're both not gonna be on vacation at the same time. Cause we're not gonna fill two spots, but in theory, it doesn't make any difference whether one employee wants vacation this week and another one wants it this weekend. Doesn't make any difference because we're on, you know, twenty-four, it's not working Monday through Friday, so it doesn't make any difference what day of the month or what time of the day, um, that it is. The only difference that goes now is, we're not gonna deny, we're, we're not gonna approve somebody that just takes Friday and Saturday off every week, right, so. Because we haven't, I haven't been backfilling, uh, your, say, your Sunday through Thursday, if the night, one of the night guys takes off, then we're only wanting one night officer on at those times. But with that being said, there is a, I mean, when there's only one on at night, that's the concern you have is, like, even if they're here, they're waiting for somebody, they're, we're dependent on somebody else for our response to a call.
And, and the county only has two on as well?
They have three-ish, depending on what time, I, I think they're sergeants, I don't know how they work two to three-ish, sometimes Cambridge will come down as well, um, so you're.
Three, Dan, and a sergeant, two officers.
Our public safety is dependent upon somebody else's entity responding, I mean, that's our, our response time, is whenever they.
Who knows where it's coming from?
Um, so like to hear, I'll, I'll let Mike answer my question next, can we afford to bump that twenty twenty-four up to twenty twenty-three? Can we move that up for adding this, if that, would that be better?
It would work, but I'd have to actually make that, I haven't really put it on paper, I'd have to make that something different as far as. Almost a variable schedule, you know, so the person's gonna bid knowing that their schedule's variable depending on other people's time off request, to make it actually work, to make that kinda plug in those holes.
Call it the power shift.
Yeah, power shift, but knowing that.